Yeah. I mean, literally twenty million, one hundred and forty nine thousand.
All those things that hadn't been collected until subsequent to year end. Intergovernmental receivables of two hundred and twenty-two thousand related to the EDA grant that hadn't been collected. The due from component units, one point three million. Eight hundred and seventy-seven thousand was due from LEDC related to the grant. The grant match on the EDA grant, that series two thousand and nine grant payment and salaries and benefits. And then four hundred and thirty-one thousand nine oh eight due from LCDC related to the series twenty thirteen grant and park projects. And then you had inventories on the books of three hundred and one thousand prepaid items, a hundred and three thousand. And then for capital assets, capital assets not being depreciated, of course, that includes land and work in progress of four point three million. Depreciable assets net of depreciation of forty-four million, six hundred and eighty-two thousand. And then you'll have your water rights with Crimwell, City of Lubbock at four point five million. So during the year additions on capital assets were three point four million and depreciation taken was three point one billion. Major additions for the year, you all had a silk coat project, various park improvements, telecommunication console and then the wastewater treatment plant. So those are the the big additions for the year. Water rights, like I was saying, Crimwell, City of Lubbock, you had amortization taken on that investment of three hundred and fifty-seven thousand, which went to expense. And then we come down to deferred resources, of course, with the pension and OPEB plans, you have defer deferrals that will be recognized in future periods. So that was one point six million. Liability liabilities include accounts payable of six hundred and fifty-eight thousand, your accrued payroll of two hundred and thirteen thousand, crude interest on long-term debt of a hundred and forty-three thousand, customer deposits and prepayments of three hundred and thirty-two thousand. And then we get down to net pension liability, that was seven hundred and ninety-nine thousand. The total OPEB liability was two hundred and seventy-five thousand. You recruit compensated absences related to vacation sick leave, five hundred and ninety-two thousand. The closure, post closure liability on the landfill was sixty-six thousand four eleven. And then you have your due within one year on your long-term debt of one point eight million and doing more than one year on long-term debt of twenty-two million, three hundred and twenty-two thousand. Overall, for twenty twenty-four, y'all didn't have any new debt issued. So long-term debt payments on principal of one point nine million and the interest on long-term debt being paid of one point one three two million. And then you had deferred inflows of resources related to pension and OPEB plan. For the ARPA funds that were unspent at year end were one point six nine million. And then you had deferred gain on bond refunding. So the bottom of the page net position, debt investment and capital assets, that's your biggest number of forty-six million. Then you have restricted amounts with the biggest one being your sewer improvements of four point two million. And then your unrestricted piece of fifteen million, eight hundred and ninety-three thousand. And I was telling James the other day, you know, your cash position looks really good. You have unrestricted amounts of twenty million sitting on your books, you know. So y'all are doing really good from that standpoint. You do have a lot of debt on the books, but you know, that's paid over a long-term period, so. But a short-term cap working capital, you'll have almost a whole year's worth of working capital. So that's always a good thing.
And in comparison to other cities our size, you said we have almost a year of working capital.
Yeah, that's really good. Most of them don't have that, like the smaller cities, they don't have close to that, so.
Thank you.
All right, turning to page five, this is your statement of activities. I'm not going to spend a lot of time on here, but I'm just going to go over kind of just the general items. Overall expenses for the for the whole government, which is the primary government, including governmental activities, business type activities, eighteen million, eight hundred and forty-two thousand in total expenses. So that twenty million would cover all those expenses if you didn't have any revenues coming in to cover any of that, so that's really good. Fees, fines and charges or services were eight point four million, operating grants of one point four million. And then capital grants and contributions of six hundred thousand. And of course, the ARPA funds that were recognized during the year, y'all recognized a little bit over a million. And we did a compliance examination on that since you didn't have to have a single audit. So y'all just fell under that, so we did that again for you this year. So over if you go over the total column and go down to general revenues, obviously, property taxes are your biggest revenues coming in at four point seven million. Sales taxes of three point three million, franchise taxes of nine hundred and ninety-eight thousand. Motel occupancy taxes of a hundred and seventy-two thousand. Then you had your investment earnings, which did really well this year, two million in investment earnings, so really good. Then you have some miscellaneous and gains on disposition of assets and contributions and donations. So overall, you all had a positive change for the year in net position of three point nine million. I was telling James the same thing, positive change in net position is awesome, you know, that's what you want to see. So that just means that you're covering all your costs, you're covering depreciation, amortization, so the city is doing really well. So that's pretty much my spill for y'all unless y'all have anything for me, and I don't want to keep y'all longer than I have to.
Thank you for the good news and thank you city staff for the hard work to make.
I think they work really hard and they're continuing to learn, so that's the main thing.
We appreciate you working with our new staff and in helping us learn how to be better. But very proud of a great audit, somewhat late, but we're back on schedule now. But proud of great numbers, we have over a year's worth of operating funds.
Yep.
If there was some form of awfulness that happened, as it's raining and hailing right now. But we're very thankful for that and and we've seen those numbers improve. And we've talked about that in budget and how we've seen things improve in the last three years.
Okay.
Anything we can do to be better? I'm sorry, I interrupted.
This is like unqualified.
Yes, exactly, unqualified, yep. Yeah, I mean, like I was saying, I mean, y'all just need to work on certain things and prepare certain documents for us during the audit. So we're not having to do as much of the grind, you know? We should just be getting your numbers, making them matching them to third-party, you know, confirmations or whatever you have out there to make sure that everything's tying out. So the less work we have to do, the better.
So.
So.
Goes for all of us.
We have a plan and a process now and we're we're.
Y'all do, y'all do.
What is our audit cycle? What is the cycle?
Cynthia, would you talk about the audit cycle, the normal audit cycle?
So fiscal year in September thirtieth, typically we've scheduled the audit within November to December. It kind of varied what was happening throughout the that year for the financial director in the office.
And how soon do you close your books after September?
They stay open until the audit's complete and we've made all of our entries that we need to. That's rule of thumb. Now, whether I was done making entries or not, this last year it was closed December thirtieth. That's the goal is to have it closed September thirtieth so we can plug in our new numbers for the current fiscal year into end code. And ideally, everything should be done wrapped up by then, but since we were behind it kind of pushed, we were pushing the timeline. But like David said, now that we're back on track, the books will be well closed by then.
Yeah, and then she said near her final trial balance just today, so I matched it up with ours and it was right on, so we're good to go.
Yes.
So our fund balance rolling forward should be good. So. But yeah, that's the process. I mean, we like to come in around November. Some used to, we'd come in like somewhere in the middle of October, which goes us, it doesn't really matter, we're going to have it done before March. That's the goal, to get you everything, everything wrapped up and then present it to y'all before March or during March. And I know used to I'd come in like January, I think, sometimes and present. So it just depends on my schedule and when we can get it done, so.
Well, thanks for making.
But we're going to get it done within that hundred and eighty.
Oh, for sure.
So you're not paying a fee or whatever.
Yes.
Thank you, David, for your help on that. Any other questions on this? It is an action item.
Mayor, I move that we approve the fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four audit as presented.
Okay.
The motion in a second by Mr. Ledesma, all in favor?
Aye.
Non-opposed motion carries. Next item, item number two is the presentation of the fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six budget. I hope you brought an umbrella.
He doesn't.
Oh. Need to get David a trash bag or something to rent us pick up.
Mayor and members of the council, this item before you and mayor, I just figured out what you were asking me earlier. We do not have the budget ready to present to y'all this evening. We just worked through our final numbers on health insurance. So we will get that wrapped up this week and have a formal presentation of the budget and all the documents that go with it with you on the eighteenth.
Perfect. Sounds great. So we should move on to item number three?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Item number three is to consider and take necessary action to propose a tax rate for fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six.
Mayor and members of the council, what we're actually doing on this item is establishing a tax rate ceiling to advise the public of what we are looking at in regards to a proposed tax rate for the FY twenty-six budget. The tax rate ceiling is a number that the city council says we will not go above this number. We can go below it, but we will not go before it. The, just to give some things in in perspective, the no new revenue tax rate, this, the no new revenue tax rate, this enables the public to evaluate the relationship between the taxes for the prior year and for the current year based on the tax rate that would produce the same amount of taxes if applied to the same properties that are taxed in the new year. Basically, what it is is whatever our assessed value is in this coming year, if the tax rate would be to bring in that same amount that was from the previous year. So that's what the no new revenue rate is. The voter approval rate is the highest tax rate that a taxing unit may adopt without holding an election to seek voter approval of the rate. The voter approval rate is split into two different categories. The maintenance and operation rate, this is a tax rate that is needed to raise the amount of taxes at the taxing unit levy in the prior year plus an applicable percentage allowed by law. This accounts for such things as salaries, utilities and day-to-day operations. And then the other portion of it is the debt rate, which includes the debt service necessary to pay the taxing unit's debt payments for the coming year. So our FY twenty twenty-five, twenty-six, no new revenue tax rate is point five three six seven oh six. And the voter approval rate is point six zero zero six eight eight. Staff is asking for a tax rate ceiling to be considered by the council. The tax rate ceiling of point five seven five zero zero zero.
Again, that is not the tax rate.
That is not.
Far above what we have talked about just for the public's interest in in press here and the tax rate that we have talked about, and I would say barring any natural disaster that we plan on adopting would be less than point five seven five.
Yes, ma'am. That is just the number that we're saying we will not go above this number. This is an action item if a member of council wishes to establish the tax rate ceiling of point five seven five zero zero zero.
And we'll vote at our next, when will we set the tax rate, at what meeting?
That's next time.
Okay. Oh, the calendar on that summer.
And that being the ceiling.
Yes.
Ceiling, and we will come in.
Lower than that. Yes.
I make a motion that we approve the tax rate ceiling of point five seven five zero 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 for the FY twenty-six annual budget.
I'll second that.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Non-opposed motion carries. Item number four is to consider and take necessary action to establish the date for a public hearing on the fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six tax rate.
Mayor and council members, by law, we are required to have a public hearing. We are actually scheduling two that gives the public the opportunity to come twice to hear about the budget, but also to hear about the tax rate that we are proposing for the FY twenty-six budget. Those two public hearings will be Monday, September eighth and Monday, September fifteenth, both will begin at six P M.
Mayor, I propose the public hearing on FY twenty-six tax rate for Monday, September eighth and Monday, September fifteenth, six o'clock P M.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
With that, non-opposed motion carries. Item number five is to consider and take necessary action to establish the date for a public hearing on the fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six budget.
Again, mayor and council, this item is to establish the public hearing dates for the proposed FY twenty-six annual budget. We are also only required to have one, but we are establishing two to give the public ample opportunity. And we are recommending the public hearings for the FY twenty-six annual budget to be Monday, September eighth and Monday, September fifteenth at six P M.
But we order two public hearings on the FY twenty-six annual budget for Monday, September the eighth and Monday, September the fifteenth at six P.
Right then.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Non-opposed motion carry. Next item on the agenda is going to be considering take necessary action on a payment request from M H Civil Constructors Incorporated in the amount of five hundred and sixty-two thousand nine hundred and twenty-five dollars and fifty-four cents for the construction of the one point eight M G D wastewater treatment.
Mayor and members of council, this is the first payment request for the new wastewater treatment plant that is under construction at this time. This is primarily for the initial mobilization that they have in place. Staff would recommend approval of this item and authorize city manager to execute necessary documents.
Mayor, I recommend approval of payment request number one for M H Civil in the amount of five hundred and sixty-two thousand nine hundred and twenty-five dollars fifty-four cents for the new one point eight M G D wastewater treatment plant pursuant to the contract approved between the city and M H Civil Contractors on May fifth, twenty twenty-five.
Right then.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Non-opposed with that, the motion carries. Next item on the agenda is number seven, the discussion about issuance of certificates of obligation.
Mayor and council members, we have placed this item on the agenda again just to continue to remind our public that this item is coming up for the council's consideration on August twenty-fifth, that we will be issuing new certificates of occupancy, excuse me, certificates of obligation for the wastewater treatment plant and for the future animal services, animal shelter facility. Today, I received notice from Standard and Poor's regarding our issuance and they affirmed our A-plus rating has not changed, has not gone down. And they've also said our outlook is stable. Part of that is is to our strong reserves that we have. Other factors are our financial management and the tenure of management that we have within the organization. So council will consider the issuance of these items again at the August twenty-fifth meeting for wastewater plant and the animal shelter. Questions from council on any of this or clarify anything?
I don't have any questions on the C O's. Bill, I understand it, we're not happy we're doing it, but I I completely understand it. Sure. I'm definitely seeing movement out there at the wastewater treatment plant, seeing a lot more equipment there, definitely seeing those M H Civil guys in town. I've learned to recognize their trucks, there's a couple of different paint schemes, so.
They were eating locally in town. Eating locally in town at lunch, so.
Yes, and they're at they're at restaurants and businesses and convenience stores when I do see them. So that's just the ray of sunshine we're trying to find in this and and hope that sales tax increases as a result. We've been very aggressive with them, we've we've made maps, we've taken them restaurant guides. We're trying to promote ourselves to them as they are captive in our community and if nothing else, they have to eat. Any more questions on the C O's? But that will move to discussion item number eight, discussion about the proposed fiscal year twenty-six budget.
Mayor and council members, with the FY twenty-six annual budget, again, want to remind council of the revenue recommendations that staff has made to the council to improve the water improvement fee from one dollar to five dollars per month. This is to cover the cost of capital projects that City of Lubbock Water Treatment Facilities, who treats our Crimwell water before it gets delivered to us. City of Lubbock is responsible for five point nine eight percent of the cost for this treated facility. We are also recommending a increase in the wastewater improvement fee from twenty-one sixty-two per month. And I think the last meeting, we said we wanted to move that to twenty-eight. It would cover it completely, we wouldn't have a deficit of around sixty-five thousand dollars. So I need to make sure I make myself a note on that. And again, the reason for this, the wastewater treatment, construction wastewater treatment plant construction bid is twenty-six million, two hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. This is about six million, six hundred and fifteen thousand dollars higher than projected. This increase in the fee will help cover those new costs, also those certificates of obligation, part of our interest in sinking debt service fund. That a portion of that debt will cover about twenty-five percent of this new fee as well. So we're not putting it all within the utility fund. And then we are going to be asking for those bonds that we increase the debt service rate from point three six two seven one per one hundred dollar property tax valuation to point zero five seven three per one hundred dollar property tax valuation. This new debt on the I N S will provide approximately three million dollars for a new animal shelter and again, pay twenty-five percent of the twenty twenty-five second series of certificates of obligation. We also today, we had our last meeting on health insurance and at times I kind of feel like I'm buying a new car at the car dealership because we keep going back to the finance director and getting new numbers. It looks like that our increase will be about four percent within our health insurance, four. Four percent.
What I said, fourteen, four, yes, I want to make sure that right.
That does increase the deductible on one of the plans up to seventy-five hundred dollars, but we are buying down that seventy-five hundred down to three thousand, thirty-five hundred. I think we're still trying to work through that number in utilizing dollars that the city pays up to six hundred and fifty dollars for employees' health insurance. That employee health insurance has been coming in in the four hundreds on on one of the plans. So we intend to use that savings to create a pool to help employees at buying it down. So once they hit the three thousand dollar mark, then there will be a mechanism to cover the rest of that. We will also be contributing twenty-five dollars per month in all employees' HSA, FSA accounts. And then if they go and get an annual physical, we'll have a letter that their doctor will sign and return that. We'll put fifty dollars in their account as well. It's not great, it's not perfect, but through Margot's work, Justin's work, we were able to to get this down to something that I believe we can take care of our employees as as fairly as possible. Our open enrollment where we'll meet with all of our employees will be in the latter part of this month. But health insurance is always one of those challenging items that's out there. And it's it's difficult to to try to figure it out. But I just say very appreciative of the city that provides a dollar amount for employees to to cover employee only, but they also provide a certain amount for employees and spouse, employees and children or employees with family. We we don't cover it all, but we cover a pretty good chunk of it for those kind of things as well. So I think this is good for us. We have to always look at how we compensate our employees, how we're taking care of our employees. And this is one way I believe that we can continue to do so. Also, within the budget, we are, we have factored in a three percent cost of living increase. Wish we could do more and as we get to the final pieces, if we find we have a little bit more room, we may come back to you with a little bit higher number if that is at all possible. Our organization succeeds because of our employees and we take care of our community. So I want to make sure we do the best, take care of them. We know that we still have to make some adjustments in some salaries along the way. We know last year we made some adjustments in our police department dispatch. We need to look at public safety, we need to look at our certification pay across the board for all employees. So we are continuing to look at those to see how we can take care of our employees that take care of our community. You will see a a public notice coming in, I think. As Cynthia handed y'all the the public noticed on the revised tax rates that are out there. This, this is a required document that's there. If you'll look, especially on page two, because some of these numbers can get big quickly, you'll see a two million, ninety-four thousand, eight hundred and three line item that is from our water meters and from our wastewater treatment. The the payments that are attributed to them in debt service, two lines down, five hundred and ninety-six thousand, forty-nine dollars. Those are our E D C and C D C funds that that get factored into this. And then the three seventy-seven, five thirty-five is our debt service when you, when we do our interest in sinking debt service things to help kind of explain some of those big numbers that are in there. But we are in the final stages of finishing everything. The health insurance was probably one of the last items that we had to shore up. And I believe we got that done today, so we'll be able to finish the budget and present it to y'all next Monday. Hopefully, if we get it before Friday, we can get all your notebooks from you and get it placed in there. So you'll have time to look at it as well. And I appreciate all the time y'all have given. I know we've asked a lot of y'all over the last few weeks, but I think anytime we're looking at capital projects, increases in fees and taxes that we need to have these meetings because just they're open to the public, they're welcome to attend. Just give them the opportunity to hear what we're doing, give them the opportunity to ask questions just so we can help them understand what we're trying to accomplish as we continue to move the city forward. So. Questions or anything from council?
Mr. Fisher, the the Blue Cross started out with a twenty percent.
It was closer to forty. It was closer to forty at one time.
And they ended up at two, four percent?
Yes, sir.
I think we're.
Negotiating on your part, I commend you on that.
It was Margot and Justin and and even Gallagher, the the company that we uh contract with to take care of us. They they did a lot of work. It's it's frustrating because you get these crazy numbers and it causes you to start slashing in places and trying to figure out how to make it work. But through perseverance and diligence, through staff asking the hard questions um and pushing on our contractor, we we got it down to a good number.
And I believe if I've read correctly and try, I've tried to pay attention because we were talking about this. I we're not amazing because our number was four percent. I'm very thankful for that, but I think other entities came in much much higher from what what I've heard. And so I'm just very, very thankful because just like you said, it's part of taking care of our employees. And if we were setting at twenty five, thirty, close to forty percent increase in healthcare, they were just not going to have it. They would choose not to use it. This was my fear, and they would choose not to take care of themselves. And then we we all suffer, plus they're unhealthy. That's just not what I want. I don't want to compromise their ability to have or to use the medical facilities we have. Oh, I'm proud of four percent, just like Bill said.
Covenant is going to be all right with this insurance, right?
Yes.
They're going to be accepting the insurance.
Yes, sir.
We will still have covenant, but we're also, uh, we discovered in the last week, there's some programs at U M C that could benefit our employees. So we're trying to find out more about those in it.
It would open up more doctors, if nothing else, maybe a quicker appointment, maybe a specialist, something. Is is that kind of how that works? Yeah.
That's what we're chasing down. And you know, we've covenant is is great for our community, takes care of our community and takes care of a big area. But if we can also tap into U M C and you utilize some of their programs to help our employees, we're going to look at that as well to see if we can find places to help them deal with some of the challenges that they have. Health insurance.
Blue Cross, Blue Cross.
Blue Cross.
Yes, that deal.
No. It's a difficult uh thing to understand. Health insurance is very, very complicated.
Understand that.
The billings are complicated, and we're trying to do everything we can to help our employees understand um how to utilize their their health insurance to the best of their ability, take care of their family.
Talking to myself, how do I even read the bill?
It's it's challenging and frustrating because I think all of us have seen bills where you see a number and then it very small, don't pay this. We're still working on it. And you're like, okay, when do I pay or what do I pay?
Why did you send it?
And why did you send it to me? So.
And then the build rate and the negotiated rate and then actually what I owe, it's very intimidating and very confusing.
And a lot of people just say, I'm just going to write a check and we'll figure it out later. And we're we're trying to to help them understand not to do that and and to question their bill because you see something on there that shouldn't be there, then you need to call and say, hey, tell, help me understand what this is.
Any more discussion about the proposed fiscal year twenty six budget?
I can I make a couple of comments? Uh, um, I won't be here next time, but uh I've spent few hours reviewing this budget and uh, you know, from from reviewing the public budgets now for fifty years, this is a very lean, conservative uh budget. And uh, there's a lot of things that look like uh there may be frills. Actually, most of the things in this budget are mandated, and we have no choice as a city, as a city council, we don't have any choice in terms of budgeting and paying for some of these things. So uh, you know, in that regard, I think uh the preparation of this budget was well done, thought it was well thought out. Uh, I think it's a good plan. Uh, it's like any other budget. Uh, the first day of the budget is it'll change. However, I think this budget will will wear uh throughout the coming year. And I think it's a, again, a credit to the city uh in preparation of of all the numbers. Uh, and I think the thing looks great myself. I I'd I'd vote on it tonight, but I'll have to wait.
Agree. Um, it's been a long work in progress, and I know it's been way more hours, lots of you than I have. I'm also proud of the level of aggressiveness. That's what we said we were going to do. We're going to be aggressive and market ourself. And um it sounds silly, but taking restaurant guides to M H Civil and and the guys that are building the Whataburger plan and building the Take Five and the Seven Brew, we need that. We've got to be aggressive and market ourself. Nobody's going to do it for us. So um we're choosing that mantra moving forward into the next fiscal year and uh we're gonna, we're just gonna be aggressive and market ourself and and grow ourself. I guess we'll move on to item number nine, city manager report, staff updates, project updates, staff citizen recognition, items of community interest, no action will be taken.
Mayor and council, I'm going to do my best to do this from memory because when I thought I was hitting save, I hit delete. So uh manager's comments went far, far away, and they were not recoverable. So we'll be short and sweet to the point. Um, a couple of things staff wise, just to get y'all up speed. Uh, Amado uh Galvane has accepted uh as our assistant director of public works. Uh, and he's uh, we're going to be working with him on training and different things like that that he has asked for to uh help him feel comfortable in this role. Eli has uh completed um a lot of training. He just recently passed his, remember that property. Yeah, he's and he's doing a great job over there, too. So we'll be uh visiting with him about uh moving forward uh in continuing in the supervisory role that he's over there. Um Tex dot is, you know, is moving forward on getting College Avenue wrapped up. They're trying to work on the uh roads that run into College Avenue and clean up the pieces there. So um hopefully, uh, they can get that wrapped up in the next week. Um, we drove a fire truck um through three eighty five and uh college, uh country club just to see if it would work. Uh, it scraped just a tad. But uh maybe we need to go a little bit slower, or maybe it was because the truck's full of water. But they can actually um go through that way now, Tex.
Stuck.
That's all that matters. So that that worked out well. Um.
That was a huge win. That in itself was a huge win.
So there, those things are going well. Um, Justin, do you know anything else we got?
Mayor and council, uh, Public Works, Amado and his team have started uh painting at S P C, and then they also started painting crosswalks for the schools. They will be commencing painting on the paw prints uh here soon. We're just getting clarity on again, as Mr. Fisher stated last week, on the stride of the lobo. So um we're getting started on that and uh have continued spraying for mosquitoes and such. So Public Works has been doing a great job to uh provide service to the community.
Spray will definitely continue that process too. Let's thank for it, though. Thankful for it.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah. We, um, mayor, we had a big de- debate on how the paws are supposed to be spread in the in the actual stride. And we didn't know if it was a little lobo, big lobo, we, so.
That's my call. I'm just going to make the road.
We'll figure out something of kind of where they've gone. Uh, our fire department uh has been doing a lot of inspections uh through the businesses in town. Uh, really trying to help uh those businesses understand uh what they need to be doing better. Um, they probably weren't very popular. Uh, they went to the schools and did some inspections and teachers aren't the greatest in following fire code when they're decorating their room because they're trying to make their rooms look special. So sometimes they they do stuff that they probably shouldn't. I know this because I was married to one for years and they.
I'm also going to say, I don't know that our fire department has ever done that. So I think that this is learning as we go from those teachers. They've they've never maybe had this information before.
So it it's been really good, and I I appreciate Patty's leadership on that. And I know uh police and fire are gearing up for the first day of school. Uh, they're going to be out there. Uh, they may walk some kids to school. So uh they're really doing some special things to um make our kids feel special, but also to make kids feel comfortable of going to public safety people in in the event. We unfortunately, as society have kind of made police, fire, more important police as the bad guys, and they're not. They're they're uh great folks. We've got a exceptional police chief. And um they're just continuing to make strides within our community. Uh, last Friday, we taught about fifteen employees in C P R, first aid, A E D. And then we threw in a curve and also teaching them how to operate a fire extinguisher. So our goal yeah, our goal is to get all of our employees uh trained and certified in this so that if something happens within the community that we can respond accordingly. Uh, and also take care of each other if something happens out there. So I appreciate the fire department uh leading that. Um just put on your calendar. I know it's ways off, October seventh. Uh, Texas Night Out, uh, that'll be a great event for our community. Um, a lot of things are going to be coming up in September and October. You thought uh August was busy with meeting here every week. We're going to be even busier over the next two or three months, but things are going well in uh the City of Levelland, and we just continue to be thankful that we're here and thankful we get to serve our community the best we can. So questions, Ms. Corley, did you have anything, Dan?
Thank you for all the little things. The the paw prints are are a little thing that makes a huge difference in a small town in West Texas. Thank you for training our employees on how to take care of each other. Thanks for checking on the schools on the fire code. I mean, I really, I may be misspeaking. Maybe we used to do that every year. I might be wrong on that. Uh, but I think it's a wonderful addition. Anybody have anything else? Hey, no other items? With that, we are.
I just need to apologize uh to the city council that not being here during the meetings. I've been in the tough side. I've got too many things going on with me. So I apologize I not being here. I'm going to try to be here the reality. Because they will be coming up to to help everybody decide, yeah.
Thank you, Mac.
Thank you. We miss you when you're not here.
Glad you're back.
Thank you.
Yes, we do, Mr. Powell. We miss you.
With that, we are adjourned.